Call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council of Fort Myers Beach. Eight time addition. Monday, September 21st, all council members present, town manager, town attorney, and will stand with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Gathered to make decisions for our community. We use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance to what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Let's reach into the flag of the United States of America. Through the red flag, it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the final agenda.
Move to approve.
Move, is there a second?
Second.
Move is second and discussion. Objection. And is approved, we'll move on to public comment.
The requests I received are all for the public hearings.
Okay.
I have no other requests.
Anyone else wishes to address the council? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Anna Botana. My family, I own Bay Water Boat Club in Reynolds, down in Benita Springs, and I want to thank everybody here for the support that they showed in District 76 in the primary. And I just wanted to come out here and introduce myself. Born and raised here, water quality is a big concern of mine. That's why I'm running, and that's why I asked you guys to go out and vote in November, too, for me. I'm going to leave some cards here with the town clerks. Got my cellphone. Feel free to please call me, and I look forward to working with you in the next couple of years. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thanks for stopping by. Good luck. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Tana Schott. I'm here for my parents, Dwayne Amber Schott. When this will come up on your agenda, but we received something in the mail regarding the Winkler subdivision and expansion over by Bay Oaks. That's where their home is, 310 Nature Viewport. And it has to do with us contacting the town for years guarding their driveway, filling with water. I'm wearing these galoshes. This is bucks, almost every day, almost eighty. Garbage cans, recycle bins, galoshes. It's, do you have examples, exhibits, just from September, every time it rains. I will leave these if you would like to take a look at them. We had spoken, Chelsea O'Reilly is very well aware of this. We had, I had met with Baker. We know how far back that goes. He said he was out there, met with my parents, not a problem, we will take care of it. We had a change of town managers. And all of a sudden, well, they were redoing the roads and the sewers on that street, and so my parents had been told that would be redone, no problem, redid the road, that whole cul-de-sac. Problem is now worse. Of course, their problem never got taken care of at all or addressed. It's like, whoops, sorry, oh, well. They were told by town that they could bring in gravel for drainage on their driveway. I mean, it's a cement driveway, they've been there since the 1990s, never had a problem, and we've got all this money in the budget, you guys are putting money towards other things, and they continue, get passed off, and passed off, and passed off. So I guess I'm here tonight because they are tired of getting brushed off constantly. They're taxpayers as well, and they have a right to have their property not have, be as dumped for stormwater. I don't know if it has to do with the new property that had been built next door to them several years ago, but then when they redid the roads, it became worse. So I'm asking that this be addressed as you're looking at the Winkler subdivision project and the vacating of that hole and the transferring of properties, that this also get looked at. I don't know what else to do. You don't know what else to do. Thank you.
Came to the right place.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion. The next item is local achievements and recognitions. Before we start with the individual council members, if they have any. We have one here, which is a very high honor for the town. From the, through the, through the work of the town staff, Manager Hernstadt and Chelsea O'Reilly and whoever else was involved, we were able to get the reclassification on our, from FEMA, for our classifications for our flood insurance, which will result in a, in a further discount for our residents here. So they, they've sent us a letter, and I'm going to read it into the record because it is, it is such a big deal. And they sent us this beautiful plaque, which is an honor, which will find its place here somewhere. And, why don't you come up here, Roger, and hold it? You can hold it up here. If the council members want to come up, come up here.
No breathing.
Yeah, just keep distant a little bit, the best we can. Let's not be criticized. Okay, one.
But that's okay.
All right. Now, we received this letter, Roger received it, and I'm going to read it. It's from the United States Department of Homeland Security, FEMA. Mr. Hernstadt, the purpose of this letter is to provide you with the results of the National Flood Insurance Community Rating System field verification findings based on your three-year cycle verification. Final verification report is enclosed for your records. Congratulations. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, has determined that the town of Fort Myers Beach will increase to a Class V in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. Floodplain management activities implemented by your community qualify it for a 25% discount on flood insurance premiums for NFIP policies issued or renewed in special flood hazard areas on or after October 1st, 2020. This savings is a tangible result of the flood mitigation activities your community implements to protect lives and reduce property damage. It goes on and on and on, then we'll say down at the end, "I commend you on your community actions and your determination to lead your community to be more disaster resistant. This commitment enhances public safety, property protection, and protects the national, the natural functions of floodplains and reduces flood insurance premiums." If you have any questions, call so-and-so. Sincerely, William Lesser, CSR Coordinator, Federal Insurance and Mitigation Administration." And that was copied to Chelsea O'Reilly. So anyhow, we applaud you. It's nice to get some good news now and then. So congratulations on that, Roger, and to the town as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, congratulations, Roger, and the town. Could you just spend a second, since we seem to have a, maybe have a good audience tonight, explaining sort of the practical ramifications, which I think are spectacular, for our residents and for our businesses, Roger?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, counselor. And these are, these are average, savings are up to savings in some cases, so, you know, if you haven't participated in a, in a national flood insurance program and your savings a little less, I apologize, but this is the average. $145 per policy, that's annual, additional savings, additional savings, and cumulatively for the town, it's potentially $919,000. Additional savings.
Say that again, Roger. Is that for the town?
It's almost a million dollars in savings, $919,000.
For the town of Fort Myers Beach?
Almost a million dollars.
For the governmental entity?
An average policy of $145.
For the whole island or for the governmental entity of Fort Myers Beach?
The property owners on the island who participate in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Collectively, close to a million dollars in savings?
Yes.
As a result of it?
Yes. And it's important to note that the review process is very comprehensive, but what it mostly closely looks at is how the planning, zoning, and building codes are applied within the town. And I know sometimes you're on the receiving end of perhaps of being viewed, that the staff is being a little too strict or requiring extra documentation or whatever, but the payoff for us doing that is this benefit.
Is there anything in particular that a business or resident needs to do to take advantage of these savings?
No, it, it, it's, the area is coded that way, so when the insurance agent applies for the policy, they should pick up the code. If they need any information or a penalty discount from what they paid last year, they can contact us and we will help them through that process.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Anything, Chelsea? Okay. Congratulations.
And also, Chelsea, and also, of course, our community development staff as well.
Congratulations to all. Okay. Anybody have any, Dan, you have any recognitions or achievements?
Yeah. Recently, with the appointment of Jim Nichol to the fire commissioner seat, it created a potential conflict with a fellow member serving on the Public Safety Committee. Ron Fleming has been with the committee for quite a while. He's going to have to step down because of those, doesn't have to, but he's been advised that he should step down, and I'd just like to recognize him for his service to the Public Safety and the Fire Commission Board. Both he and his wife, Jan, are the examples of what stewardship of the community is all about. If there's anything that they need to be involved in, they're involved. And their dog, Rocco, for that matter. He's a staple on the island, so.
Most importantly.
Yes, yes. So you can see him, he has his own umbrella now, so you'll see him on the beach, going up and on the beach every once in a while. Thank you, thank you, Ron Fleming, for your service to the Public Safety Committee, and, you know, to the public, it's important that if you want to be involved in something, the committees are a great way to be involved, to be a voice, to, you know, help advise the council to some of the decisions that we have to make. So appointments are coming up next month. There's still some open seats, so I encourage the public to get out and get, get involved.
We have a special person to recognize today, and she will be receiving more recognition in the future, I'm sure. There's a person in this room who has attended more town council meetings in the town of Fort Myers Beach than anyone else has, and that is Michelle Mayer. It is my understanding that tonight is Michelle's last night in the clerk's chair for a meeting. We are transitioning. She's not leaving us yet, but it's the last time she will be sitting in a seat with us for a meeting. I can tell you that I will miss her greatly. Both times I've been on council, she is endlessly patient with my questions and requests. She's always extremely well-prepared, and I wish her well in all her future endeavors, and we're going to miss her.
Did that patience come along?
Maybe she's just patient with me, Ray.
Yeah, I'd like to just recognize Brad Cornell, Thought Abon, our Chad Schultz with the town, and Penny for putting together the Sandsboro Collection, FGCU volunteers for doing that. I know the first day, there was a dozen or so people out there sweating away in the sun, and I had a pickup truck full of Sandsbours, a bag full of Sandsbours. And I came here and Chad came out and helped me put it in the, came out of the bags and put them in the dumpster. It was kind of a messy job, but they were great people for a good cause, and I think they, not only the birds, but the people who live down there are really going to benefit from that effort going forward. The other thing is the, as Councilman Adler pointed to, our volunteer committees, a lot of people who are not going to be, not asking to be, continuing with their position, I just want to thank them for their, giving their time for free to the town, and, and there's a lot of, a lot of time and a lot of very great people that are on those committees. And, and also echo what Councilman Adler said, that if you want to get involved, if you care about things that go on on this island, it's a great way to get involved and to, to have a, have a beneficial effect on your neighbors and your water and your, and your island.
Just want to also express my thanks to Michelle for your many years of public service. My sense is we'll have another opportunity to do so, but since it's your last formal meeting in the chair, just again, thank you for your many years of public service to the town of Fort Myers Beach, all I have.
Of course, we'll echo that to Michelle. Right back to the beginning, so that, you know, she knows where all the bodies are buried, in case we ever.
Normally, I don't discuss local achievements and recognitions, but I do want to mention, since none of you have mentioned it, and I know you would have had you remembered it, is the community foundation worked cooperatively with Keep Lee Beautiful this Saturday and did a beach cleanup, and I recognize the volunteers from many groups, including Alliance Club and FGCU and many other students and clubs, and just individuals came up and participated, and we all appreciate that very much.
Thank you for saving us on that one. And, okay, we'll move on. The next item is advisory committees' reports. Is anyone here from an advisory committee? Continue. The next item is approval of minutes. We have the Town Council Management and Planning Meeting of September 3rd, 2020, and also the regular meeting of the Town Council, September 10th, 2020.
We have a proposed amendment to the regular meeting minutes of September 10th, page 15 and 16. When we did the millage rate and the budget, we tabled the motions and then brought them back and voted on them again. To me, when I read this, it's not clear that we passed them, it's clear that we voted to table them, but normally, there's a box for each vote, and if that could just be clarified, that there were two votes on each section and that they were passed. And if I see no one else indicating amendments, I would move to approve both sets of minutes with the amendments just indicated.
A second? A second? I'll second. Any discussion? Objection? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. There are three, four, five, six, seven items on there. If anybody wishes to discuss any of those, we can. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Alers. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to discuss item A, the lobbyist, Ronald Book, his contract renewal, the town of Fort Myers Beach, for $45,000 annually. I would just say, as a former state legislator and as a former lobbyist, I think it's very important that we have a lobbyist that's advocating on behalf of our town. I, I just saw in the Miami Herald this weekend, an article that was entitled, Incoming House Speaker Warns of Deep Budget Cuts Coming to Florida Government Programs. And I'll just quote briefly, Representative Chris Sprouls, a Palm Harbor Republican, who is in line to become the Speaker of the Florida House of Representatives for years in November, hinted that the budget austerity needed to recover from the coronavirus-induced recession would take three to four years to get back to where we are. He was optimistic Florida would be in better shape than other states. See that because water quality issue, the water, Southwest Florida is such a critical issue to the town of Fort Myers Beach. Never met Mr. Book, I think it would be nice for him to come before the town council and give us an update about the upcoming session. I contacted the head of our local Chamber of Commerce, Jackie Leesack. I said she's very active in Tallahassee and very active on the clean water issues. I asked her if she's ever met this gentleman. She hasn't. I would encourage Mr. Book to get together with Jackie, partner with our town council. We're going to be having our snowbird advocacy program next year with a, with a sort of a subset that will go after folks who live in Florida as well. It sounds like we're going to need to do that, given the parameters of the next session and the budget constraints. I would just, no, the lobbyist is primarily focused on town business, but I would argue that water quality is town business, and I would just encourage Roger to see how Mr. Book can partner better with the council, with Jackie, and this clean water coalition that we have around this island. So I just, just a recommendation on, on my part, I guess, to you and Mr. Book. Be great to have him come at some point, just present to the town council his views and perspectives, and then we could begin to build a relationship with him.
I'll bring that to his attention. I think the clerk may have sent you a recent article through email about Mr. Book, so if you have any questions or would like to have a conversation with him and his staff, or try to get him to schedule his next Southwest Florida visit to coincide with one of our meetings, if possible.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Just as a little background, I, I know, I know Ron Book. He was, he was our lobbyist. My first tour duty, when I was on the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council, as a result of that, I was on the State Committee. He was our lobbyist for the Florida Regional Council's Association. He lobbied for us in Tallahassee, and once, once a year, we went up there and with him up there, and I got to know him pretty well. He's a real dynamo. I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about it. He's the best, and, but you're right, it would be nice for him to do a drive-by one day and come.
And I don't, I'm not casting any spurs. It's on his ability. I just think we can partner with him better. Yeah.
Okay. Any other?
Can I just speak to one thing? So it's very important, when we set up our state legislating later priorities that we sent to him, we'll have that discussion December-ish.
Yes.
Important that we had the chamber, and to the extent that they have issues that align with council's objectives, that we can include those, and that's how we begin to create that synergy. So we can work on that.
Okay. Any further discussion on any other items? Any objection to the motion? During non, motion carries unanimously. Agenda is passed. Okay, the next item, we go into some public hearings. The first one is a final reading and public hearing ordinance 20-13, nuisance abatement board. This is ordinance number 20-13, an ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, adopting a new Article 5 of Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Fort Myers Beach entitled Nuisance Abatement Board. Providing for the creation of a nuisance abatement board, intent and jurisdiction, providing for certain activities to be declared nuisances, definitions, organization, initiation of proceedings, conduct of hearings, costs and fines, appeals, enforcement, rights reserved, and providing for severability, codification, scrivener's errors, conflicts of law, and providing an effective date. We'll open up the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, before you start, it has been advertised properly, so the item is, before you, properly, for second reading, an adoption. And we've distributed a, an updated copy for each of you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just, just so perhaps you and the audience understand, typically, these items would typically fall after the budget items, but because this potentially could have a impact on the budget, along with any discussions about community policing or any enhanced services, this would be your opportunity to vet these issues and decide if you want to then talk about the budget, make any adjustments as might be appropriate.
Open it up to the public, begin with?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm here representing the Lonnie Kai. I've been before you. I'm back again. I'm sure you're glad to see me. I just wanted to, once again, express a desire to see that this not pass. I kind of went through your ordinance to see if there's ways for you all to address some of the concerns that you have and what's happening on Fort Myers Beach. And I know you probably already know this, but did find the Safety Task Force that I don't believe is actively. I know you have some sort of fire, but there is a Safety Task Force that was passed in 1998 that would allow the citizens to basically get together, address some of the concerns, and make recommendations to the council in ways that you can improve, and work with law enforcement and other stakeholders, like the chambers, to make improvements. I also found an ordinance that was passed in 99, which is one that was about public nuisance, and it provides civil fines for any violation of an ordinance, and one of the ordinances is prohibition of prostitution. So I think the mechanism to address a lot of the concerns that I've heard over the last several weeks are already in your ordinances, and I would ask you not to create any duplication. Again, as you all know, I do believe, what was stated, I don't believe, I kind of know, that Lonnie Kai was the catalyst and the target of this nuisance abatement ordinance. We've done a significant amount of work at the Lonnie Kai to address the concerns. I think I shared with you my report with respect to the incorrect numbers, whether you accept them or not, it's fact, and we will be working with the sheriff's office to make sure that they don't continue to use 1500 Estero Boulevard for every single one. And my colleague will share with you, Mike, the concerns that we have specifically with the ordinance in terms of the legalities. And as you know, Ken Conadaris, one of the owners of the Lonnie Kai, is here to assist you as well. But I want to thank you for your time, your patience, your hospitality in allowing me to address the concerns that you had. We are always available for questions, and again, would ask you, please not pass the nuisance abatement ordinance and create additional regulation and cost to the town.
Thank you, Ellen.
Next request is from Michael Witt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Michael Witt. I'm an attorney. You can probably tell by the suit. I've had the pleasure, really, of representing Conadaris family since 1980, a long time, continually, but on and off, as they've had legal problems. I'm a trial lawyer. That's what I've done since I was admitted in 1987. I, I look at this ordinance, and I'm not here really in a role as a trial lawyer to kind of threats if you all adopt this, that's my, but I see this, and my takeaway is, better review your budget because it's going to cost you a lot of money. I went through the proposed ordinance, and there are problems with the ordinance as drafted. Unless they've been cleaned up, there are still several references in here, two items that are not covered in. to items that are not covered in the enabling ordinances cited in the proposed ordinance 20-13. But there are so many things that are going to lead to financial burdens on the residents and taxpayers of the town of Fort Myers Beach. Quickly taking a spin through, the definition of clerk, a person retained by the town to perform the required clerical duties for the nuisance abatement board. You don't have a clerk right now, has that job duty and role. I doubt they're going to do that on a volunteer basis. The town attorney is going to have a lot of additional work, along with the clerk, that's going to lead to significant increased expense for the town attorney to represent the nuisance abatement board in all matters and at all proceedings. Lee County Sheriff's Office is involved. The Lee County Sheriff's Office is not going to do this for free. Not going to accept complaints, investigate complaints, meet with witnesses, do all the investigation, come before the nuisance abatement board, handle the hearings, not give you all a bill for the increased services. Lee County Sheriff's Office, it says in the ordinance, will have to run by the town attorney to determine the complaint and the sufficiency before they move forward to the hearing. Then there's the hearing. That's going to cost money. You have to record the hearing as set out in the ordinance. The sunshine requirements that you have to keep. All of that is going to cost additional funds, and it's all on the backs of the taxpayers. Now, let's talk about the hearing. Have the hearing. If there's a finding and you say there's a nuisance, you can start levying fines. The fines become a lien if you desire to do that. To foreclose on the lien, money. Appeals, money. Lawsuits, money. One last point. I know I'm digging.
Just continue. Can we just cut that off, please? Continue, Counselor.
Thank you so much. And I'll wrap up. I'm not going to take much more time. One of the key takeaways under this ordinance and is set out in the law, 60.05 of the Florida statutes. Any citizen can file an action seeking an injunction. Any citizen, not just of the town of Fort Myers Beach. Statute says of the county. Presumably, any citizen of Lee County could take your ordinance if there is a nuisance finding and file a lawsuit. That may, not saying it necessarily will, I know Ms. Haasifrost has a legal background. It may have the town of Fort Myers Beach dragged in as a party defendant in that lawsuit, which is going to cost a significant amount of money. My point is, there are items here and costs that you may not even have thought about yet if you set up this nuisance abatement board. You have the tools in place. I have been here for every meeting since all of this started, every meeting you all have had where this has been addressed. And targeting of the Lonnie Kai was very clear from the August 3 meeting. There's newspaper articles written about it. I've got all kinds of quotes. We've got the record. It's not a positive. And I would echo the sentiments of the Vice Mayor that it's not needed. It's going to be very expensive. And I would ask that the city council vote no on this. Now, we have Ken Conadaris here. Mr. Conadaris does not necessarily need to reiterate a lot of this and say things. Invited him to be here if there were questions that the town council may have of Mr. Conadaris with respect to the work being done currently at the Lonnie Kai. Thank you, and I appreciate the extra time. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Hi, Ken Conadaris. My parents built the Lonnie Kai many years ago, and I went to beach school here. I really can only just tell you this. I'm willing to go ahead and work with any one of you at any time. We can avoid the nuisance abatement board, and we still correct whatever problems or issues you have. I mean, I have no problem at all with, you know, working with each and every one of you. And if you say, hey, Ken, you know, we're seeing this, or we're seeing that, and can you, you know, help us out? You know I have an open door. I'm going to walk you from top to bottom. I have no problem. But if you have any questions, I mean, we've tried to do a lot of things already. I know one of the things was the wristbands, and you mentioned that Pink Shell was already doing it. I know we're late to the party, but we did do it. You know, so we can't be first as everything, but we are trying. We, you know, we're willing to go ahead and, you know, do whatever suggestions, you know, to make things better. This is what we're all about. Have any questions?
I don't know. Anybody want to ask any questions of Ken?
Ken, could you elaborate on maybe some of the things? There's been a very limited scope as to some of the things that you're being proactive about and doing. Could you elaborate a little bit more? I know Ellen said some of the stuff was proprietary and really didn't want to share, and I can respect that. But could you go into a little more depth as to some of the things that you're putting in place so that the public's aware? They don't have to just hear it from us.
Yeah. What we did was, we did the wristband. So now, everybody that's a guest has a wristband, opens their door. We're shutting everything, once everything's shut down, you know, that's it. It's only people that are actually have the wristbands on. If not, zero tolerance, you have to leave. Put in place where people that have done something in the past, you know, we're not renting to them anymore. We're, you know, we're putting a do-not-rent list now. We went ahead, and matter of fact, I met with the, my brother and I, we just met with the fire marshal and the, you know, I don't know if it was the junior fire marshal, whoever it was, and, you know, because we're trying to close things off a little bit to make sure that, you know, we're having an entry point where people, we can see people coming in and going. And one of the things, you know, we wanted to make sure it doesn't cause a fire issue or anything like that. And while we were there, the one person said to me, they go, oh, you know, were you here yesterday when a boat sank in front of your hotel? I said, I was here yesterday, but I didn't see a boat sinking. Well, it's showing at 1400. I still didn't see it. So they looked it up. It was actually at a peer view, but it was listed under us. And me and my brother looked at each other and go, see, this is what we're talking about. 1400 just comes up. But we went ahead, and we're making, we have our security guards on inside the hotel, making sure, you know, shoes and shirt, you know, or a gown is, you know, worn. We have deputies on every weekend, two deputies, on Saturdays and Sundays, because that's busy. We're doing it on holidays. If it's busy, you know, during like, you break rain, we'll have them every day. And we're trying, whatever was suggested to us, we're putting in place. And, you know, we just feel like, I would rather work with you than have a nuisance abatement board where it's neighbor against neighbor. I mean, you know, because, believe me, even when you were talking about volunteers and all that stuff, I mean, you know, if you call and talk to me, I mean, we have 250 employees normally. We'll have some volunteers. We'll help. I mean, we want the beach to succeed just as much as we want to succeed. Give us a chance.
You were saying with the wristbands, when you shut down, because there's been some questions as to who will be allowed in, what times they'll be allowed in, if they don't have a wristband. You had mentioned when you shut down, if you don't have a wristband, you're not going to be allowed back in. Is there times? Is there?
Right now, 10 o'clock. Right now, we're shutting our bars down at 10 o'clock. We could be open till 2, but we're not. We're trying to make sure, you know, because we're very worried about the socially distancing thing. I mean, you know, we've walked ATF from top to bottom, trying to make sure that everything we're doing is right. And they actually commended us, saying, hey, you know what? You're doing a really good job. Please keep doing it, because if you change around, then other places might try to change around, and then that causes a hassle for them. So we're, you know, so one thing with my dad and my family, I mean, I'm just letting you know, we're willing to work with you. I mean, you know, and I'm here for you, to tell you the truth. I mean, I even, you know, walked around you a little bit, you know, so.
Right then. Want more?
Just one more quick question, if you don't mind. You know, in my conversations with you, you had talked about some extra training for your security staff. Can you or would you go into what kind of training you're referring to as far as how they're going to be able to notice some things that shouldn't be going on there, or?
Well, we had a professional come in, and they, you know, had a meeting with our team, and it went really well. We're also looking at options if we want to outsource. I mean, whatever seems to be the best fit, that's what we're going to do. We're making everybody get certified. I mean, you know, so there's things that we're doing that, you know, we're just trying to go above and beyond, you know. So whatever it takes, we will do.
Thanks, Ken.
All right, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Completes the request I have for this item.
Anybody else here this evening wish to address this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Okay, Counsel, before we start hashing this out, does anyone wish to put a motion forward where we're going with this?
Before you have a motion, I did discuss with Mr. Herron a couple of changes, even to the most recent one that you received that I believe he was in agreement with, so he might want to.
Okay. As previously mentioned, we have made the global change to where the ordinances consist now with enabling legislation as far as the categories that are the subject of the nuisance abatement board, assuming the ordinance gets adopted. So that issue that has been taken care of. There was discussion at the end direction at the last meeting with respect to the chair, and that the town council would elect a chair. There was also some discussion, although ultimately, as my notes indicated, no vote on the section of the ordinance that talks about one member may be a local attorney with a criminal background, and one may be an attorney with just general experience. So what is being proposed is that the top of that ordinance section, starting composition and organization, is subsection A would read, "The town council shall appoint a seven-member nuisance abatement board." Each council member shall appoint one member, and two members shall be appointed at large collectively by the town council. The new language now, which would be a comma, "which one appointment shall be a licensed attorney in good standing with a Florida bar." By adding that language, we can then delete C and D. Then on the next page, we'd leave in, "The town council shall elect a chair," and delete the "and vice chair."
Mr. Mayor, I'm comfortable with those changes, except I think we had one other challenge in terms of reflecting our discussion from last time. On item B, I would propose that we say, "All board members except the chair shall be residents of the town." There was quite a bit of discussion about whether the chair should be a resident of the town. I believe it was consensus of the council at that time that the chair would not have to be a resident of the town or live on the island. The reason for that, of course, is that, you know, attorneys want to donate their time on the island. They may not be, may not be in abundance of them. They very well may be. I just, we just don't know.
I agree. That's my recollection of our conversations as well.
Anybody else feel the same way?
That's fine with me.
Any other changes, John?
Sure. So subsection A will read as I mentioned before, and then subsection P will now read, "All board members except the chair shall be residents of the town." One member shall be, may be a retired law enforcement officer defined in section 94310 Florida statutes, who is not currently employed nor engaged in any law enforcement activities. And then, as I mentioned before, the other changes that are set forth.
And John, just to be clear, the chair could be a resident of our town.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Anybody have a motion they want to put forward?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 20-13 with the recommended changes. Okay.
Moving second. Question.
I have a question for the town manager. So what do you think are the budget ramifications for having a nuisance?
Well, essentially, we have a acting as sort of prosecuting the case. You have to have an attorney representing the board, if I'm not mistaken. So Mr. Herron's duties, which we'll be discussing later, could be discussed at that point to accommodate one of those two functions, but you would need a second attorney if you brought a case forward. And then, the clerical activities of the board. And then, based on what I heard, the sheriff saying that they were going to do if this ordinance is enacted, you would basically need sort of a, what I'm going to call sort of like a detective to put together the case. I'm sure there wouldn't be a LCSO detective, but certainly the person who would take the material provided by the sheriff's office, put together a potential case for presentation with the attorney. Then, again, you know, it could be with the board in place and have no cases too. I mean, that's a possibility also, but should there be cases generated, it would probably take at least a part-time clerk or part-time person sort of bringing the case together, and at least one other attorney.
Outside of the actual hearings, what do you envision the town's role in being in bringing cases to the abatement board?
Well, I will say it's not necessarily in our wheelhouse, per se, based on my knowledge of how abatement boards work in other jurisdictions. Typically, the jurisdiction has its own police department, so you have a more seamless type of referral for nuisance abatement board activities. But that doesn't say that the arrangement with the Lee County Sheriff couldn't work. It just requires some additional responsibilities to be absorbed by the town. And I feel comfortable in saying that we currently don't, probably don't have anyone on board who has that skill set, per se. But that doesn't mean that we won't hire someone three weeks from now, and they will. But just right now, we don't. So we have those potential expenses. Again, that'll be driven by how many cases we have or don't have. So it's very hard to predict what that might be. We could go a whole year and have zero cases, and we can go a whole year and have a dozen cases. The, my understanding of what the council would like to do is have the board as a way to facilitate and encourage voluntary types of compliance agreements where the owner is, say, well, rather than come in front of the board, like you do X, Y, Z, and I agree to do X, Y, Z, and stipulate to that in writing, and all that, of course, all that negotiation and associated documentation, of course, would have to be done by someone, probably prosecuting lawyer, whoever that is for the town, along with whoever's handling sort of the case information generation. So it's very hard for me to predict exactly what it would take, but clearly, it's not something I could tell you if there are cases that we can absorb within our current workforce.
So now, with the, the language has been changed because of what the sheriff said their role would be. But certainly, when, if a complaint is received, and we see require the sheriff, some capacity to do investigations, you said, develop the case.
Well, so if we get a complaint, you know, as I see the potential, and we ask for a copy of the police report, assuming it's open and available and we can get it, it's not privileged at that point, but it's open, and we can get it, and we can see it, and it's perfectly clear what transpired, and there's no ambiguity, and there's no interpretation required, and so perfectly spelled out what transpired and appears to be a violation of the regulations of the nuisance abatement board in terms of what board is empowered to enforce. It's great. You know, we have a police officer who will be called as a witness based on their written report that stated X, Y, and Z. But I think the reach of, it'll be a perfect report, probably a big reach. I doubt that we'll see very many perfect reports for any referrals, which would mean that we'd have to try to do some additional research to try to develop and fill in special holes in the case to make that presentation to the nuisance abatement board if, at the end of doing that, they conclude. if, at the end of doing that, they conclude that a violation did occur. So it's, considering the lack of our experience, the lack of other entities within our immediate areas experienced in doing this. Anytime in the recent past, you have to go pretty far back to Fort Myers' experience. It's going to be hard for us to predict exactly what it would be. If you would say to me, "We want to do it," what would you do? I would just say, set aside sort of a contingency budget. Be swag at this point, but just a contingency budget in the event that we have cases that we have to move forward.
What kind of budget? Because we're talking about the budget here later on in the meeting. What kind of numbers are we talking about?
Well, you know, I would say that no less than $50,000. Now, we'll see how far that takes us, and then if we need an amendment, we'll come before council and tell you that.
Thanks, Roger.
Going to make a comment. Is this appropriate time? Recent events have illustrated once again how powerless the town of Fort Myers Beach is when it comes to controlling its own public safety destiny. We have before us tonight a tool that could give our citizenry some confidence that, at least when it comes to serious crimes, we are joining in the fight. Now, our state legislature, when they enacted this powerful tool, did us no favors by terming it a nuisance abatement board. Word nuisance is defined by Webster's. It's a person, thing, or situation that is annoying or causes trouble or problems. If I was a member of the business community, that broad definition would certainly give me some pause, particularly given the obfuscation and hyperbole that has sometimes surrounded the debate on the nuisance abatement board. Let us be clear. This is a board whose jurisdiction has been very narrowly defined by the town council and its focus, as outlined specifically in state statute, applies only to serious crimes and not petty violations of the safety of our citizenry. Please allow me to, one more time, read from the proposed ordinance, the exact jurisdiction of the board. This is from page three of the recent draft. Generally, but not limited to, a public nuisance shall mean any place or premises which has been the site of more than two occasions within a six-month period. One, the unlawful sale or delivery of controlled substances as defined by law. Two, a youth and street gang for the purpose of conducting a pattern of youth and street gang activity as defined by law. Three, prostitution or solicitation of prostitution is defined by law. Four, illegal gambling is defined by law. Five, murder. Six, attempted felony murder. Seven, aggravated battery with a deadly weapon. Eight, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon without intent to kill. Now, having just heard the actual jurisdiction, you can see how the name nuisance abatement board is poorly applied here. I think a more appropriate name might be habitual felony deterrence board. I really don't think we have set the bar for our businesses and residents too high. All we are saying is, please, don't create or allow an environment on your property where acts such as murder, assault, or drug dealing can occur on multiple occasions within a short period of time. And if they do occur, you, the property owner, negotiate solutions with not a huge new bureaucracy, with the seven volunteer members of your fellow citizens appointed by the town council, which is selected by and is accountable to the citizenry of Fort Myers Beach. Talking about cost, and rightfully so tonight, it is my sincere hope that the nuisance abatement board is rarely, if ever, used. Don't underestimate its value as a deterrent. Please don't mistake the infrequency of its use as failure. Quite the contrary, I can easily foresee a scenario where the board's dormancy is a sign of its success. Let's pass this ordinance tonight. It is certainly not a panacea for all of our public safety challenges. It simply places an additional tool in the town's toolbox in our efforts to deter serious criminal behavior here on Fort Myers Beach. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, anything?
I have nothing to add. I've made my thoughts clear, and I don't believe in repeating myself.
Good. Good for you. Okay, there's a motion on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
I thought you said yours. Okay, go ahead.
No, just a couple of things. I'm glad that we talked a little bit about the budget restraints or budget effects that it could have. I think it's very difficult to put a price on public safety. I think it's important that people know that this is not a retroactive ordinance. It's, in my opinion, a proactive ordinance. You never have to come before the board. It's never going to affect you. And as Jim has just stated, it's a... I think, to create two offenses within a six-month period, you would want to do some changes to your business on your own, not have to come before a board. I just think up until now, although there may be ordinances in place that address some of these things, the town really has nothing it can do, the community has nothing that it can do, other than say, stop doing it. Businesses up till now have the ability to say, "Well, we're just going to absorb whatever you give us, and we're just going to not change anything." I'm looking at it as a proactive tool going forward. As our island and our community continues to evolve, new businesses that will come, some will go, that will give the town and the community the ability to make sure that their public safety is taken care of. With that, John, could you maybe address some of the issues that Mr. Witt brought up in his public comment as far as some of the issues he...
Yeah, we've addressed the, to make sure that our ordinance is consistent with the enabling legislation. We've already taken care of that. I think the manager and you all have already talked about the other significant comments that Mr. Witt talked about, which was the cost and the impact upon the community of what that cost may be. But as far as the legal concerns that he addressed at the beginning, we've taken care of those concerns in the draft that's before you. It is now 100% consistent with state statute.
Nothing else?
Okay. Motion was made by Councilman Allers, seconded by Councilman Adarholz to approve the ordinance. Does this require a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Councilman Allers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haas of Ross?
No.
Councilman Adarholz?
Aye.
Councilman Veach?
Aye.
Mayor Murphy, nay. Motion passes three to two with the mayor and the vice mayor dissenting. Okay. That's done. The next item is B, which is Resolution 20-42, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2021. This is to approve Resolution 20-42, setting the final operating ad valorem rate tax for tax year 2021 at .9500 mils. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Move. And move is her second.
Second.
Moved second by the vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the item is properly before you. It has been advertised. We're awaiting the affidavit, but this is a copy of the advertisement notice that was in the local newspaper. So this item is properly noticed and properly before you. As we discussed at the last budget hearing, generally, the process would be to discuss the millage rate, then table it, take up the final budget, table it, then vote on the millage, and then on the budget because you can't come to a final determination on your millage until you have a discussion with what your budget's going to be.
Would the motion maker care to table this?
I withdraw my second if we need to table.
Is there a motion? Do we need a motion to table? A motion to table this?
Move.
Moved. Is her second?
I'll second.
And moved second. Discussion that passes, so we'll go on. We'll come back to that. We'll go to the item C, which is Resolution 20-43, the final fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget hearing. This is to approve Resolution 20-43, adopting final town operating budget, capital budget, and associated fee schedule for fiscal year 2020-2021, and finding that it is consistent with the requirements of the town comprehensive plan. So we'll open up the hearing. And clerk, do you have anyone that wishes to speak to this public? Anyone else sitting here care to address the budget?
Mr. Mayor, just have a couple of quick questions for the town manager, if I may?
Let me just close this hearing first.
I thought you were asking us.
Okay. I'm just looking at you. Okay, we'll close the portion of this, and go ahead. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to talk with the town manager a little bit about fines and forfeitures that the town collects on its revenue side of the budget. I've expressed concern over the last year about the amount of incoming revenue to the town. Over the last three years, it's tripled when it comes to fines and forfeitures, and that causes me some pause. As I understand it, the 2019 number is 108,000. And I'm curious as to what the 2020 number is. If it's higher, why? And second of all, I just would ask, in the future, as we go through this budget process, and I should have done this earlier, in fairness to you, Mr. Town Manager, I'd like to see the fines and forfeitures section of the budget really broken out. This would be a great opportunity for Daphne to illustrate some of the things that she's doing or trying to do. I'd like to see where those fines are coming from, which areas, which jurisdictions, how much. Then we can get a better sense of where the fines are coming from, the public can, and then we could begin an education process, where possible, to try to help educate the public so there's less conflict between the town and the public. And so I just wanted to give you an opportunity, Mr. Town Manager, to talk a little bit about that. Again, I would love to see it, and it sounds like, I heard this a few months ago, that there... And I'm hoping that we continue this paradigm shift. This, instead of trying to take out revenues from our town citizenry through this process, the objective should be to reduce it through education and cooperation. And I think that's the mindset, but I wanted to yield to you to talk a little bit about that.
Is there a particular page on the budget?
Yeah, it's page 15.
Thank you.
Let me start by saying this. We've budgeted for 2021 $26,000 and change. And we'll be just as happy if that number comes in, below that number or at that number. We have no objective to try to like more than that number. Number is what it is. So what you have is, you have a 20-year history of basically code enforcement and liens being applied to properties. And you have the case whereby properties were being sold without the liens being resolved. And the council took the action that people cannot come in for fine mitigation if they bought the lien. They bought the property knowing that it had a lien. And we had a case of one property owner who came before town council, it may have been a prior council, I can't really remember, who came in and said, "You allowed me," because he had multiple properties and multiple liens, and they're all covered under an umbrella. "You allowed me to negotiate with the manager." The council at the time authorized that, and we did that. And I think that person and one other person probably totaled in excess of $150,000. They have racked up numerous fines for building without a permit. It was pretty much true the violation. And I will tell you that... Not to necessarily encourage or discourage this, but we went through the numbers together on several iterations to look for opportunities to apply to carrot and stick theory. Apply to carrot. Okay, we're never going to see you again with another violation of this type. In consideration of that, we're going to make an adjustment to the fines you owe us. Now, how many people will come in in 2021? I don't know. I will remind the council that you can change your rules to allow people who got the fine to come in front of you before mitigation, if you wish. Remind the council, you set the laws. So you're at the beginning of the process. You set the laws. It's create a violation or not a violation. And then you create, get the very last look at it by saying you can mitigate the fine or not mitigate the fine. Or you can loosen your rules as to fine mitigation, loosen the cost of people coming in to request fine mitigation, if you so desire. We're just enforcing what's on the books when it becomes applicable. So your question with respect to, can we enhance our monthly report of information that we already give you? We will try to enhance it and give you some more detail with respect to this so you can monitor it more closely in the course of the year. But with respect to... This is a way to raise revenue. Frankly, I'd rather have more things going on at the Mount House or Newton House, or things of that nature, which we can't due to COVID-19. But in terms of revenue for the town, because that's a positive plus thing, to have revenue through enforcement. At the end of the day, there is a cost for the town's code enforcement program. Our budget for code enforcement exceeds most of these numbers, in most cases. So it's a service. We're not trying to recover our service. We don't have quotas for our employees. 90% of our stuff is where people have called and complained. 10% of it is where our staff has seen someone building without a permit. We watch that carefully because that has a very big impact on the first item we talked about today. But I want to reassure you and everybody on council and members of the public, no one on our staff, all 50 employees, who jumps out of bed in the morning and says, "Oh, boy, I can't wait to get to town hall and start doing code enforcement." It's not the last thing we all want to do. But it's part of the job. It's not necessarily a fun part of the job, but we take the laws that this council and prior councils passed seriously, and we enforce them when they're applicable. A recent example was when the governor gives a declaration of emergency and says, "People shall not do something." To the extent that we see people doing that, we take that seriously. All that being said, we work very hard when there is a violation for someone to come in and execute a compliance agreement with us. Typically, we'll have them acknowledge their mistake, pay a small administrative fee, that, admit their guilt, and understand that the penalty, should there be a recurrence, will be a lot more serious.
I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the information. And I certainly appreciate the pledge to have more granular data so we can have a better sense of things. And I guess my plea is, and we've talked a little bit about this before, is where possible, if your agency has, department has, yourself, whether it be the town attorney, maybe monthly, could do a letter to the editor, to the observer, to the local media, saying, "Hey, we're seeing this month, we had lots of folks putting up fences. If you're going to put up a fence, here are the various steps you've got to take to put up a fence. If you take these steps, we're not going to have any problems." These are the kind of things... My goal is a much more proactive, preventative process. And that's, I guess, my only challenge to you and your team, Roger, is to get on the offense, let people know what you're seeing, help them understand how they can avoid conflict with your team on the preventative side, and I know it's not always possible. And there's clearly bad apples out there, and I'm not asking you to turn away from the ordinances that we've passed. I do think there's a learning curve for many residents. There are chronic bad actors, no question about it, but there is a learning curve for many people who live on this island or do business on this island. And there's a lot of rules and a lot of regulations. The more we can... The more we can proactively reach out to them, educate them, a preventative way to help them never have to, to, to come before us in the first place, I, I think is a, is an effort worth making. That, that's, that's, that's all I would say, and I, and I appreciate, uh, comments.
And council, we, we don't mind doing that. I wish, I wish it was easy to say that this was the no building permit month, and this was the, you know, the fence month or whatever, we don't really, it doesn't work that way. I will generally tell you this, that, um, best piece of advice I could give you, and maybe to the extent that people might be watching this or the media might pick it up, is, if you're going to do something, if you let us know, we can tell you if a permit is required, or we could tell you what the applicable law is. And, and, no, and I think if there is ever, ever the, um, Mona Lisa of, of, of that situation was the community outreach center. When the representatives of the sheriff said, "We want to do this. This is what we want to do." They came in and they sat down in here, because we were socially distanced, there was three or four of us, they said, "This is what we want to do." We said, "Okay, this is exactly what you have to do." We showed them what we had, what they had to do, we gave them the forms, we gave them the paperwork, they went back and did it, and not only did they get their permit literally the next day, they got the whole place done in two weeks or three weeks, okay? It's where people don't take that step because they asked a friend, or they asked some person that they thought knew and said, "No, you don't have to. Check with us." That's the easiest thing you could do, and check with our staff, you can email me, and I'll be glad to put you in touch with the right person, not only to make sure you don't get a violation, but actually help you do your project in the least, the most cost-effective way.
I just saw a beautiful letter to the editor, right there, Roger. Somebody transcribed that for you?
Yeah, we'll play back, we'll play back the tape and put it out.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Who else want to discuss anything in the budget?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Roger, you mentioned earlier about this would be the time to maybe discuss, um, the enhanced services agreement that was brought forth in the county, uh, the Lee County Sheriff's Office. At our last meeting, there was discussion about maybe sending that or contacting the chair of the Public Safety Committee to potentially vet that out before we were to maybe add it or not add it to line item or in the budget. Has, has that happened yet?
Well, I think that was a count, something the council was going to discuss, whether you all wanted to do that, um, or not, but, um, so there's, there's two things, and just so to help perhaps people who, um, this is their first, first time on council. We can make mid-year adjustments, so we can bring you an item in the middle of the year and make an adjustment. Okay? So, um, if that decision is made in October, it doesn't mean the budget is locked. We, you have adequate reserves to do things that are not in the budget. You have to be careful about that, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to replenish reserve, but the next year you could have a double hit of paying for that service again in year two and replenishing reserve. Hey, happen depending upon what you do. Um, if you know what you're going to do today, obviously the cleanest thing is to, to, for us to incorporate it now, but if you're unsure, then we can't and we shouldn't, and we wait, should wait till we are sure, so we know if it's two officers or four officers, or one officer, or three officers, or whatever it winds up being. Um, the extent that the council took action on the nuisance abatement board, I would just say that, um, you should, you should tell us to, uh, set within our reserves, a reserve for that, doesn't actually tie up any money, it's just we have money to, as a placeholder for that activity, should it become necessary. If you don't want to do it now, you don't have to, and we could do that amendment down the road. Or should their activities start accumulating costs when it comes up. Um, the, the thing that, um, we're very, very careful about, and which is why we have five meetings with you about the budget, um, and we worked very hard with the staff and everyone else in between those meetings, is to not, um, budget our revenues to the absolute max, so hopefully we end the year with a little more money than we anticipated. We tried to under expend our budget, so we, and between those two things, every year we enter the subsequent year with a little bit of a surplus for us to work with, do things that are on the add-on list, things that you all, where you all see a need for enhanced service, or, um, something that the town is doing. So we are very financially strong, um, and, uh, we can, we have enough money in the budget to, for adjustments throughout the year, should the need arise. Um, so I'm very comfortable with the budget, uh, in terms of maintaining the current level of service, having a, uh, balanced budget in terms of we have recurring expenses being paid by recurring revenues. Um, so, um, the counsels decided to, to, to work on enhancements, and we have the money for that, have the money to continue our stormwater program and our, our, our water line, transmission line improvement program through rate adjustments that you all have talked about. So I think this is a very strong budget, and frankly, I've only seen one email, and it was about, um, someone who, um, I would say was against the utility, and they have a history of being against the utility from its origin. Um, so I think it's a very strong budget, and I think it's been well received, as best I can tell, with the public.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution, uh, the, uh, operating in capital budget? Sorry.
We shouldn't table.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we have to table this, okay.
Take back up, uh, the resolution on the millage.
Yes, okay. Is there a motion to table this until we?
Move to table the budget pending resolution of the millage.
Very good.
Second.
Move second discussion, objection. Okay, we go back to the, uh, the resolution for the, uh, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2020 at, uh, .9500 mils. Is there a motion to?
I think we have to move to remove it from the table first. I, I think John's our parliamentarian.
I, um, I thought that the, the motion to table, the previous one was to bring, take this back up, but yes, you can, the, the, if not, yes, a motion to remove this, a resolution from the table.
Move to remo, to, um, move back to the table. That's what we're doing, right? Resolution.
Take it back up.
Take it back up. Resolution 20 dash 42.
Second.
Move second discussion, objection, passes. Now, Veach, Veach. Yes, sir.
If I may, the priorities of state statutes, resolution, and in particular, section two, into the record of the resolution. Do it, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Resolution number 20 dash 42, a resolution of the town council, town of Fort Myers Beach, adopting the final ad valorem millage rate for the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida for fiscal year 2020, 2021, commencing October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, for the purpose of providing sufficient funds for the general funds and providing an effective date. Uh, section two, the ordinance, town council does hereby adopt the final operating ad valorem millage rate for fiscal year 2020, 2021 at 9.500 mils, which is 9.500 for each $1,000 of sex valuation. Current year rollback rate is nine point, is .9151 mils. The final operating millage rate is 3.51% greater than the rollback rate.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there a motion to, uh?
Move to approve resolution 20 dash 42, adopting the millage rate.
9.5. Been moved and seconded by Councilman Veach. Further discussion? Objection? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, is there a motion to, uh, take back up resolution 20 dash 43?
Moved.
For second.
Second.
Move second discussion, objection, passes. Is there a, uh, motion to approve resolution 20 dash 43, which is the final fiscal year 2021 operating in capital budget hearing, or capital budget?
Moved.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, a discussion?
My question would be, um, do we need to do an amendment to appropriate $50,000 from reserves since the nuisance abatement board was approved? It actually was approved, unlike supplemental policing idea, which hasn't actually been voted on. So I don't know whether, um, finance director, the town manager believes that the, the budget needs to be amended.
What we would do, of, of vice mayor, is due to the fact that, that there was a second reading and it was approved, is take $50,000 out of our reserve and put it in a reserve, subject to actual expenditures happening, and should that number become inadequate, we'll advise the council on amended.
Right, what I'm saying is, do we need to have an amended motion stating that?
I think that, um, that would be clarifying and complementing the action that was previously taken by town council.
I will make that friendly amendment to the move, to the person who made the motion, if they will make that amendment.
Um, yes.
Okay. The, uh, motion has been amended. Amendments been seconded.
I'll second the amended motion.
Uh, amended it, he seconded your amendment.
I just offered a friendly amendment. He actually made the amendment.
He did, okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Okay? All good there, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Town man, uh, town attorney. Okay, the next item D, which is the, the fee schedule, we have it in our hot hands here on the agenda, so I guess you want to talk about it? Somebody want to? Discussion to be had about this? Roger, that we haven't already covered?
No, I, I believe, I believe the council discussed and, uh, agreed by consensus, adjust our building services fee to, um, that rate, which allows a person upfront to know what the building permit cost would be, allows contractors to tell their clients what they would be, so it could be easily incorporated into the, uh, any residential renovation or, or construction contracts. Um, I would say that's the major change. The other change is just, uh, you know, rounding things, and there's $25 and things like that, um, nothing substantial in terms of revenue increases, um, and just basically a, uh, every other year cleanup act that we try to do on, on the rates.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, is there, Roger, is there a, a tab anywhere on the town's website that would show this?
Yes, the website is being redone to try to facilitate, uh, people's ability to find things like this report, uh, on the website. Right now, there, it's under the finance department, and if you go to the finance department, there's a page of documents, uh, chronologically, and return fee schedules at the top. Um, incidentally, Councilor Iles, I will say that when the council took up the building fees, um, as part of your M and P discussion, he immediately posted that on the website, and we put the link on every email generated by our building staff, the contractors and property owners from that day forward to this day, that they can click on that and see the adjustment to the fees. I will tell you, I've gotten zero phone calls or inquiries about that.
I think, I think it's, it's a great, it's a great document. There's some things in here that I didn't know, that you could rent out in town. So, you know, as I've talked to people about it, they were, they were amazed at some of the things that are available to pay a fee to rent, so I think it's a valuable tool for people that anybody, that, you know, in the community that wants to go and see what they can rent and what it costs, so thanks for clarifying where, where to find it on the, on the website.
Councilor Iles, you, you at one point had mentioned, um, an adjustment for the Times Square merchants. I don't know if you wanted to, to reinitiate that, that conversation now or at a later date.
Uh, no, I mean, if, I was going to bring it up at the end, but, uh, if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, you know, I'd like to, to address.
Or right now, the fee that would be applicable would be the new fee.
Right.
So, you know, if there was, uh, a, a, a many-day abatement or whatever to the old fee or something of that nature, now would be a good time to say that.
Or the, uh, you know, even maybe the postponement till, till next year. I, I don't remember if council is aware of the conversations I had brought up about potentially giving the Times Square merchants a break on the increase that is coming on October 1st, I believe, the square footage rental, based on, uh, you know, the last couple of years of things that, uh, they've had to go through. I don't know if that's, you know, the will of the council to, to consider that, or to maybe change it, uh, for a couple of months, give them a, you know, maybe through season to, uh, hopefully get back on track. I think that's, I think that's very appropriate, uh, given the COVID dynamic. They have not been able to fully, fully utilize that space anyway, so we're, we're getting ready to raise, to rent space that they haven't even been able to fully utilize through no fault of their own. So I, I would support any effort to postpone that, that increase for as long as possible.
My only hesitation with that is that we also rent space to other people under contract. And as I remember, we raised the rates to match, I believe it was, for example, SOB, that everybody was treated the same. If we change the fee schedule for Times Square, then they're paying less. Their people that are renting from us aren't, so that doesn't seem quite fair to me.
Is SOB the only one, the only private business in addition to Times Square that leases from the town?
Um.
I have no problem with including them.
Counselor, um, there, there may be one or two others, you know, I would suggest that if you're, if it's an outdoor seating type situation that you're trying to address, Councilor Iles and some of you, then that would be aye to everyone who is renting for that purpose, outdoor restaurant seating.
I think that's a good suggestion.
I guess I would say, if you're going to go that way, I'd just say through season, I wouldn't make it for a whole year. We've, we have delayed and delayed in raising the rates down there for years and years they have paid less, a lot less, um, the going rate for that prime property. Um, so I, my suggestion would be, if you're going to go that direction, make it to, I don't know, the end of March. Delay the increase till the end of March.
What would be the financial impact of that, Roger?
Um, it's $200 per square, if my memory serves me correctly, I don't remember the total amount of, of square feet, time, six months. Um, I don't know that in the overall scheme of things it would be, you know, um, significant. I'm sure I could tell you that we won't miss taking the budget one way or the other due to that.
Is the, uh?
It's an equity thing, it's not really a, a revenue generation thing.
Are the, uh, are the, are the tables that are outside in, in, on our property, are they to be at 50% now usage?
Um, something, something came out, um, Governor, I haven't, you know, I've forwarded some, one thing to you today, I'll have to check, I think it's basically, um, six feet apart or a certain percentage of coverage, I don't remember exactly what it is today, but, um...
My point is, is if they're, uh, if they're losing a little bit of square footage due to restrictions that have been placed on us by the, uh, the governor, then we could prorate that, that portion of the, uh, of the square footage out there that they're not able to use, if that in fact is the, uh, is the beef.
I, you know, I, I, the prob, the, I want, I don't want to make it overly complicated because, you know, they have four top tables, six top tables, eight top tables, and, you know, it depends on the party that's coming in, and so this table might be empty and that table might not, then next, an hour later, it might be the other table, then this table. So I think the council, um, wants to help businesses who rent from us, to restaurants who expand their space and, um...
Expand the space?
Said, to, to utilize the space.
Utilize.
And to the extent that their in-store space was extremely limited due to covered, I think that's really the bigger problem than the outdoor space was, the fact that they couldn't use their indoor space, which placed demands on their outdoor space. But, um, I think the simplest way to do it is just, you, for stay, for stay the increase for X number of months, way to do it.
I agree with the vice mayor, I don't think it should go on indefinitely, and I also agree that, uh, they, their, their rates down there have been discounted over the years, well below the market rates. They've, they've, they've really been able to enjoy that, uh, that property down there for years, the, uh, at a way below market rate. As, as was stated by the vice mayor, that, that some of the most prime real estate in all of Lee County. So, if, uh, I'm not, I'm not hard-hearted, so... So if, I'm not, I'm not hard hearted, so I mean, if we, if there's a concession to be made, it should be made on a, on a short-term basis, you know, get them through the season or what have you.
Could tie it to a date or if the, if the restrictions get lifted. I would, you know, April 1st would, was, you know, that'll get them through the entire season at least. And maybe we'll still be under the restrictions that they're under. I don't have a crystal ball, so I'm not sure when, when that's going to happen, but at least we'll, they'll have a date that they will know that they have to start planning for, just like they did now. But fortunately, some things have happened that have been out of everybody's control.
Maybe it would be cleaner to pass the 2021 fee schedule in its entirety and then do a separate motion for just that issue.
I wanted to dispute, go right ahead.
Having, somebody seems to be disagreeing with that. Are you disagreeing with that, Jim?
I'm not.
Okay. Then I was going to go ahead and move that we approve.
I had a quick question regarding a different fee.
Oh, go ahead.
If I might, just real quick. This is just more informational. I'm sure there's a reason. On page six, you see a $1,000 fee for hearings and appeals going to council. If somebody wanted to appeal their decision to come to us, we charge them $1,000. Help me understand that one. I'm sure there's a good reason, but I didn't fully understand that.
Well, most of the items that would come to you through that would go, go to the LPA and to Town Council as part of that appeal. And the staff work of putting the items together, putting together all the reports, bring staff here to make presentations to the LPA and then into Town Council. I know at one point, so you were talking about maybe trying to expedite those things, but right now, I tell you, in many cases, our costs probably exceed that.
Just help me understand. So, so just if you come before the LPA, is that included in the $1,000? And then obviously that then goes to council automatically as well?
Yes.
So they're packaged together?
Yes, sir.
For that $1,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to better understand that. So you're not being charged an additional $1,000 to appeal or come before council? This is just, this is the whole process?
Typically, the item go, there isn't, there is an item I could think of that doesn't go to LPA and council that would generate that fee.
Thank you.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2020-21 schedule, fee schedule?
Second.
Second.
Moving second it. Any discussion? It's the entire schedule and then you want to do another one for that? Okay. Any further discussion? Any objection? That motion carries. Your follow-up motion?
Let you.
Uh, yeah. I'll make a motion to amend the fee schedule for the outdoor seating to take place April 1st.
Suspend, suspend the increase for six months?
Until April 1st, yes. Second.
I'm moving second it. Any discussion?
This without any kind of contingency if the.
Uh, no, I, I think that's, you know, gives them through, through season and there's not a question of, you know, if the restrictions are still in place, asked, April 1st, and they know what's coming.
So let's just maintain the, the present rental rates.
Around the six months.
Or another six months. Okay. Any further discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion carry unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the E, which is the second and final reading and public hearing, ordinance 20-14, All Year Slow Speed Manatee Protection Zone. It's ordinance number 20-14 and ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, repealing Article 2 of Chapter 32 of the Fort Myers Beach Code of Ordinances, amending Article 5 of Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Fort Myers Beach entitled, "Putting Restricted Areas, Vessel Control, and Water Safety to Include a Manatee Idle Speed Zone in Matanzas Pass, Providing for Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, Conflicts of Law, and an Effective Date." Open the public hearing.
I have a request from Sue Morris.
Morris comes up. This has been properly advertised and is properly before you for second reading.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Morris and I've been here a couple of times before you folks. And on behalf of the Committee for No Wake in the Back Bay and all of the concerned homeowners, I would like to personally thank the Town Council and the staff for all of their time, effort, and the work they put in making this happen. Manatees are listed as threatened and need to be protected. Lee County led the state in manatee deaths in the past. Unfortunately, just last week, a manatee that was struck by a boat didn't survive. We appreciate the town taking steps to lessen this risk. We now impatiently await FWC to do their part in approving this ordinance. Thank you all so much for your time and effort.
Thank you, Sue.
Concludes the question.
That's it? Anyone else here here to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll close the, the public hearing there and bring it up to the council. Is there a motion to, to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 20-14.
Second.
And move and second it. Any discussion?
Here.
Sir.
Um, I just want to echo Ms. Morris's words. You know, in terms of a civics lessons of how government should work, residents of a particular neighborhood came forward, came to the council, spoke at public, listened comments, told you of a problem. You all listened intently to that concern. You, you directed staff to, to work on it, which we did, and passed forward several months and, and here we are, you know, generating a solution to that particular problem. So for, for the people who say that we don't listen or we don't act or we don't get things done, I think this is actually a absolute model case of how our town government can work effectively. And I just want to make sure that everyone sees and recognizes that.
You're good. You're good.
But also just, you know, really hand it to Sue. She's been a spokesman for a group and they've been very effective. They've not only just yelled, but they've researched, they've, they've learned what the process was. And Chad for coming up a way, with a way to hopefully make this pass all the different hurdles it still has to go through.
You're good.
I would also like to just commend the staff. I mean, this is a, this was a big task and there was a lot of information, a lot of hurdles to, to go over. So great work, Roger, you and your staff for, for getting it moved along very quickly.
Now if we can actually get the boaters to slow down.
Yeah, well, that, that was going to be my comment. The, the next is enforcement, but. FWC.
We could add that to the nuisance. Violations of boat speed.
Any further discussion? Any objection? A roll call, roll call. Council of Beach.
Aye.
Council of Manado Hall.
Aye.
That's a.
Aye.
Mayor Murphy, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item, F, which is a petition to vacation a portion of Ibis Street. This is to approve or deny, or with condition denied, vacating a portion of the plat identified as Ibis Street right of way located generally between 281 Ibis and 290 Ibis Street. Your staff report, endless?
Yes, sir.
Beverly Grady?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is a road vacation matter and, and it does require a public hearing, but it is also quasi-actual nature, so it would be appropriate to swear in anyone who's going to give testimony here this afternoon and disclose any ex parte communications you may have had with respect to the item.
Swear.
Heard, tell the truth, hold truth, not the truth.
Witness is Miss Warren.
Bike by.
Bike by. None.
None.
F. Do we do it that way? Is it staff first and then?
There it is. Applicants.
Oh, the applicant first? Okay. Do applicant first?
It's okay. We got, we got to switch right.
Ali Bhutara, Planning Services. The case number, VAC 20200053, vacating right of way of Ibis Street. Request is to vacate the portion of right of way of Ibis Street plat described as Lot 37, which is also package number, page number 138 of the agenda packet. Applicant owns the property that is abetting to this right of way. Here you can see the location of right of way in the, in between 281 Ibis Street and 290 Ibis Street. This is the property details currently owned by Town of Fort Myers Beach. Here is a plat for the right of way that is requested to be vacated. Uh, this is 10-foot utility easement requested by the utility department. Uh, these are the findings of the prop, of, on the, on this case. And staff recommends approval. Staff finds that the request is consistent with town's land development code and comprehensive plan, and hence staff recommends approval with conditions as it's given in the staff report. And request motions from you. Applicant and the owner and the agent is attendee if you have any question.
Questions? Staff? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. For the record, my name is Beverly Grady with Russell and Andres and I'm representing you, um, and Teresa Carson, and they are the owners of 281 Ibis. And the first thing I want to do is file the original affidavit of publication from the news press for the vacation and an affidavit of mailing that we mailed the letters, the notice to all of the property owners. I'll give those to Michelle. Oh, it's the same one on the screen, but it's. Beverly, how are you? Good to see you. Oh, yes. All right. All right, so the first, on page two, what I did was put the two plats together so that you could see where Ibis Street is and you can see it. And I also enclosed behind the PowerPoint slide, an actual 11 by 17 of the two plats put together. It's a little larger so that you can see it. Estero Boulevard is on your far left. The bay is on your far right. And you'll see at the end of Ibis Street, we've colored in, what comes across as yellow on the slide, we tried to do a little green there. That was vacated in 1952. The end of Ibis was vacated by the Board of County Commissioners the end of 1952. Then you'll see that there is a yellow piece that was vacated by this council in 2000. And what that leaves is the remnant of Ibis that is next to the Carsons. And so then, the next slide is larger. That shows Lot 37 owned by the Carsons. Outlining green is the vacation from 1952. So the end of Ibis was vacated, you know, what is it? It's over 60 years ago. And the piece in yellow was vacated by the Town Council. It actually goes off the sheet. So we're asking for the corresponding piece, the thin white, next to Lot 37 to be vacated. What's helpful about this slide and this survey is it shows you that, at the, the, really the only infrastructure that's in the vacated area that we're requesting is a water meter. And there is a water meter. We're glad to give you an easement or, you know, for that water pipe that leads to that water meter. That water meter is a little box that has a WM. It's in the very corner, the south, I'd say east corner of the area to be vacated. Drainage has shown there's a catch basin right outside of Lot 37 where the cul-de-sac is. The Carsons are here to testify there's no drainage issue at the end of the cul-de-sac. There is a condition in your resolution regarding provision of gas. So there's no gas line on Ibis. There's no gas line to this property. They do have a gas generator that's theirs and it has propane tanks that they get filled, but there's no need for any easement for a gas line. And so we're going to be wanting to review just the condition as we saw last worded for council. Page four is the area requested vacation. I wanted to get that on the screen and we carved it to exclude the CenturyLink pedestal. So we've had no objections and we only have the water meter that's in the vacated area. And the last is a, page 142 from your packet, which we just received this week, which is the request for an easement back to the town. So we just wanted to ask a couple of questions. When we went to the LPA, there was just a condition asking for a 10-foot easement. We had thought, and the, the Carsons were watching this from a hotel up in North Carolina and I was here, but they thought it was like a 10-foot by 10-foot easement. And that the LPA was unclear and I met with the planner afterwards and she said, well, they would be having, you know, a specific legal prepared, but she didn't really have. So we didn't know exactly where it was. So when we got the staff report for the council, we see it's 10 by 60. So we want to work with the town. We, we really want the area vacated. The LPA unanimously recommended approval. We just really don't understand the need for a 10 by 60 when the only thing is a little water meter in the corner. So we're just asking that, that question. What triggered this vacation? A, the town had previously given a permit for pavers to be placed in this area to be vacated, which leads to their driveway. And when they went to replace them, the town said, no, this is still right of way. So that was what really triggered causing the vacation. So we can put, they put new pavers in, in front of their house and on their driveway that's on Lot 37, but they want to have matching pavers. And if you've looked at the street, there's a beautiful hedge that's right along the edge of the vacated right of way. The Carsons have maintained it ever since they bought it and the owners before them. So it's a beautiful addition. And if you look what the Carsons have done, they've really invested in improvements for the end of Ibis, which we believe is a benefit. So we're wanting to work with the town. We just, we were surprised by the 10 by 60-foot long easement when the only thing that's there is a water meter in the corner. So we're not seeing, the wastewater line is on Lot 37 directly to your line in the right of way. So we're not seeing those other needs. So if you look at the resolution that you have, which is on page 136, if, if your packet's numbered, if you go on, if you go on your website, these are the numbers that they have on your website. But at section three of your resolution, we had a couple of comments. It's a 10-foot utility easement identified on exhibit B, I mean exhibit A. Now, there's a problem. You have two exhibit As in your resolution, so you probably want to call. So you probably want to call the one where you want the easement Exhibit B, because Exhibit A is what you're vacating. So your easement back would be, should be a different exhibit letter. So it has it for an existing private gas line. And there is no, there was a, there was a misunderstanding. For some reason, they thought there was a gas line. There's no gas line on the street. We have no problem with installation, operation, maintenance, repair of the potable water pipelines. That's fine. Anything related to water, we don't have a problem with. We just don't know why you would want wastewater when there's already wastewater lines to the homes. As you can see, the remnant doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't lead to the water that was vacated over 60 years ago. And the other thing we just thought was, if you really needed 10-foot in width, would it be acceptable to have seven and a half feet, which would match any setback requirement that they have? You know, in case they wanted to do something in the future. So what we were hopeful of is understanding what that full amount was needed. And, because it really, I don't think is set forth in, in the staff report. And it is new information to us since we were at the LPA meeting. So we want to work with the town and want to provide an easement back for something that you'd need. But we just thought perhaps there might be something a little smaller. We, what we want to make sure is we can put the pavers in, in the easement in the area. So we could, even if we grant the easement, if you want the full amount, just want to make sure we can put our pavers in there so it all looks uniform. And that'll be a benefit to the, and the Carsons would, would like to speak. And so we appreciate the LPA recommended approval, staff recommends approval. We just wanted to understand the full extent of the easement we finally saw in the council report, which we hadn't seen earlier.
Why don't we get to the bottom of that right now? Let's figure that out. Staff want to discuss the...
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me just generally say this. I mean, I can't explain the county's actions, the county takes whatever actions they took back in 1953, I think you said. So forever is a long time. And we don't want to create situations where, if we ever had to get in there to do something, which could happen in the future that we can't. Frankly, a typical easement width would be 15 feet. I think the staff tried to recognize the fact that these folks wanted to minimize it and would probably make a comment, so they cut it back to 10. And the fact of the matter is, is that if we had to disturb it to do something underground, we would put their pavers that they're going to put in, which is what their attorney stated today. We would take them out, we would do whatever work we had to do in this, put them back. So it's part of our, our work. But it's my recommendation that, to, to the greatest extent possible, that if we're going to give away our, give away our property, that we maximize the, our, our ability to maintain an easement should we need it in the future. And if we never need it in the future, it's no harm, no foul to them. And if we do, we have it and we don't have to get into an issue. Those of you who are involved with the stormwater phase one and phase two, you are well aware of the issues of lack of easements created in terms of additional town costs and other things when we couldn't get to where we needed to go and had to take a longer route than was really perhaps necessary. So it's just good government, maybe it probably, will probably never need it. But for us to have it in the event we do. Again, if we do need it, we do disturb it, which would be our responsibility to put it back as the way we found it.
That was very helpful, thank you.
Sounds reasonable.
Real quick question, how far into the easement do the pavers go? How far would the pavers that you want to put in? How far into the easement would they go if it's the 10-foot?
Carson, we're going to have to get you on the record, if you want to step forward and...
Mayor and Councilman Carson, IBus Street. As far as what it, look at mine where he's owner of the garage. Already have pavers on that that was permitted. And we just, I guess I need to back up. Reason why we're standing here today is because we were trying to put like-for-like back down from previously permitted pavers. And so it came, came to light that we need to vacate it right-of-way in order to complete that. So we were able to put a portion of our driveway back in. And to be able to get over to from the side of the house, it's probably probably about 12 feet. I need to rephrase that. There would probably be about three feet on the you're looking at it from the way on the right hand, from the street, from the cul-de-sac in, on the right side of the driveway. And that's, that is an estimate. So it's, uh, on a lot of improvements to this home. We've been under some type of a permit ongoing since July of 2019. So the, with, with doing this, we just didn't, we just didn't want to, the main, the main objective was to put the pavers back down. Understand that we can do so. But still limiting anything else that we can do on that side of the house. So that's why we're requesting the seven and a half feet versus...
The proposed plan, if you'd like to...
So when you're looking at that drawing, if you look at where it says edge of new pavers, there's a line right underneath that. And that was our, basically our existing, it's a very faint line, but if you look at it, it goes straight up. That was where our other existing pavers were, were at previously. So, and this is all over just a section of driveway on the right-hand side of the house. So we want to be able to put the pavers back on until this came up. And it was just, I guess it was, was confusing to myself and my wife is that doing things for stormwater, et cetera, when stormwater is already in place. Looking at that, is the previous, it's on the left-hand side of the driveway. We have, like many other streets here, we have zero issues with water. Has been taken care of and it does drain correctly. So what would ever be done in that section of easement for water retention? I just, I guess I just don't understand what could mechanically be done there that that piece would need to have an easement to do. Is it pipes underground? Because it can only go so far, up to the other vacated right-of-ways. I guess that's what we're just, don't understand. Versus putting a statement, "We'd like to have that for future," however it may be. That was more a question, I guess. Better just statements, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Mr. Mayor, we, we have, we're trying to help them facilitate the project, but we don't want to get caught in a situation down the road where, you know, where our good intentions put us in a box. There's someone here who was here earlier, earlier, who put in pavers, who now has a puddle of water in their driveway approach and is coming to the town looking for, for help resolving that. I'm not saying that's going to happen, may not ever happen, but us retaining some rights, there'd be an issue down the road. God knows, things are changing unfortunately. Sea level rise, for whatever reason, it might be occurring and other things. Who knows what might happen in the future? And so this is a way that we can support what they're asking for, allow them to put the pavers where they want to put them. And should there be something that we need to do underground, we could do it and replace their pavers and whatever infrastructure we would have to put underground sometime in the future, whatever that might be. We have the right to do it and we don't have to start then questing at that point in time, either from these confined folks or the successor owners for an easement and perhaps having to buy it or whatever.
Anything else? Mrs. Grady?
We're fine with the 10.
Okay, good, good. Well, it seems reasonable. I mean, as Roger explained, if you ever have to do anything there, it can be replaced or whatever. And by the way, how familiar with the job down there, it's a really nice, what do you call it, mermaid or something like that? Or how? Oasis, that's what it, yeah, I knew, I knew it had a catchy little name there. But, okay. So you're finished, Beverly? Yeah? Okay, thank you very much. Any further from the staff? No? Okay. All right, we'll bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It is a public hearing, so have to give the, the general public an opportunity to speak if they so wish.
I did, maybe I didn't. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing portion here. We'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion by the council on this occasion?
I just have a quick question first. Beverly, you indicated there were two Exhibit As. Can you tell me which page it is that you think should be labeled Exhibit B? And I'll make that correction in the resolution?
Yes.
As I make the motion? Is it, is it page 142?
I have, all right, it is, um, that page is in your staff report, that's the sketch of it. That is from your staff report and, if I can, it's that page and the page in front of it has the meets and bounds sketch by Tetra Tech.
Yeah, the, the, Madam Mayor and members of the, Vice Mayor, the idea is that we're going to superimpose and it would be one. So you'll have the meets and bounds of the area being vacated and on the same sketch, the crosshatched area with the, with that 10-foot called out. So it would just be one Exhibit A, that's the...
You're going to create a new Exhibit A?
Correct. We can combine them, we're, that's...
Okay, but I, it's just, in your, in your resolution, you're vacating Exhibit A, which is larger, and then you're getting an easement on a piece of it. So if they're both A, I just, I...
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, can I suggest that we just call out a, an exhibit showing the legal description and the easement to be retained by the town? And we'll get it properly labeled.
That is fine, with laws is clear, great.
Thank you. To the chase, Roger, and we like that, okay.
I'm still not sure then how to make the motion because the resolution still says Exhibit A under Section 3.
And we'll, we'll reflect that in Exhibit A, the area vacated and the area that we're reserving the right, the easement.
Okay, and do I need to delete the words "and the existing private gas line"? Because there is no gas line?
Yeah, okay, there's no gas line, yeah, that's...
I'm going to move to approve Resolution 20-37, which will have a newly created Exhibit A as indicated by the town attorney and delete the words "and the existing private gas line" by utility owner from Section 3 on page 136.
Second that. Any discussion?
Just to compliment you guys on, it's as beautiful from, from the, the street as it is from the water. So night, nice work.
Any further discussion by the council? Objection to the motion? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item is G, which is another vacation. Vacation portions of School Street right-of-way. This is to approve with conditions or deny a vacation of a portion of Town right-of-way on School Street.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Definitely.
Councilmembers. We're going to continue with vacate Monday here, I guess. The application before you is on behalf of the Town for Town right-of-way of School Street, as you mentioned, G. It's a resolution and the application's 2020-0074. And it's a portion, I'm trying to find the overall exhibit for you. We've included the sketch and descriptions as part of the resolution draft. And there's a color exhibit in your packet, I believe it's the last item. I know page 237 of your packet has the portion of road to be vacated. That is the one that is before you. There's a second one obviously with two separate applications. Essentially, that portion of the road to be vacated is currently being used, I believe, as a parking lot for based on the findings and staff's review, we've, that is consistent with the development code. There's a proposed easement. It's 10 feet wide across that. I'm sorry, we do not. That's, uh, vacate the right-of-way and then it'll be used. It's all part of the bigger land swap that's going on. This will make us, it will not be recorded until the signed interlocal is delivered between all the parks. Request your recommendations for approval, the LPA's recommendations.
So just, so if we approve it, it doesn't become a matter of, it isn't applicable yet until we deliver it?
So it's approved and the, the actual recording of the property change wouldn't happen. School Board did, did their first approval already, so we did approval, they did approval. This is the next step and there's one more step to follow by the school board. We would hold this, just like we sort of did with, let me think of an example, like TPI, where we gave them approval, they gave us a promise to give us certain properties as part of that approval. So it's a timing thing. It has to go first.
There's no, I mean...
We would, if the deal unraveled, we would come back and undo it.
And vacate?
Yes.
Yes. There is specific language in the agreement between the, the school board and the Town that if both parties don't fulfill their obligations under the companion interlocal agreement that you previously saw, then everything gets unwound. Including the property reverts back to the Town.
Right-of-way would revert back to them.
Hey, any more questions of Mr. Green? Staff? Okay, thank you. Open it up to the, does this have to be a
Yes, sir.
Public hearing? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody wish to speak to this vacation? Hearing none, we'll close it. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll move to approve Case 2020-0074.
I'll second it.
Move and second it? Further discussion? Objection? Carries unanimously. Uh, the next item is H, which is also vacating a portion of Bay Road right-of-way. Vacation 2020-0072. Approve or deny with conditions vacation of a portion of Town right-of-way on Bay Road.
Thank you, sir. Similar circumstances, same, same project, same interlocal. This request is for that portion of Bay Road as described in the packet, including the proposed resolution. What I was trying to look for before for you is packet page 367. That's an exhibit that we included that kind of spells out the whole land swap component, so you can see where this piece fits in. It's an upside-down, backwards L essentially for the portion. This is what's being requested for approval. Staff has reviewed the request and is, and development code, the LPA recommended approval, the conditions, and there are, there's I believe it's an easement, I'm sorry, yes.
So this is the, um, property exchange, if you will, for the, with the Lee County, County Government. This is the right-of-way adjacent to, to Matanzas Past Preserve. And they're giving us the private property that they own within the overall Bay Oaks complex in exchange for this. So they'll have a little bit bigger area and we'll have contiguous area, basically the width of the property. And we have a, we'll have a shared use agreement with the school board for the last, most southernly piece.
Questions of Mr. Green? None, okay. Open up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Is there a motion to approve this vacation?
I'll move we approve
Resolution?
Resolution, vacate 2020-007.
Second.
Move and second it. Further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is I. It's a public hearing, which is the first reading and legislative hearing. Land Development Code text amendment, Section 34-639 permitting survey requirements. Land Development Code text amendment, Section 34-639, permitting survey requirements. Ordinance 2015 is an ordinance of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, amending Section 34-639 entitled permitting survey requirements of the Fort Myers Beach Land Development Code, revising the survey requirements and providing for stormwater compliance and inspection, providing for several ability, codification, scrivener's errors, conflicts of law, and providing for an effective date. We'll open the public hearing and set a final reading for October 5th thereafter. Okay, Steph.
Thank you, sir. Yes, this is a change to your land development code. It is essentially during, well, for permitting of certain applications, of applications, there's surveys that are required. Throughout the process, there's different types of surveys. In table, or excuse me, illustration of chart one, which is on your packet page 372, it's the core of that. And so what we've done is modified that table slightly and added a few more areas where surveys are required. There's also certain circumstances where the survey is unnecessary to the director at the time of review, and by the applicant. That's always been that way. But really, what we're trying to do is create surveys that match the need of the review process. And our hope is, at the end of the process, that will allow us to streamline. It's always where the bottleneck is. Somebody's always trying to close or get a CO on a property and get people. It's always crunch time for the contractor. Trying to streamline that process so that we're not the barrier and burden, and we can move through that process quicker. So what this essentially does is, one of the changes it does is allows the design engineer, who'd done the stormwater for a new home, they can sign off and send a letter in after they review an as-built survey from the surveyor, send a letter in saying it was built to their plans, with their design. That avoids us having to do an inspection. We'll have qualified stormwater inspectors most of the time for on staff. That'd be an additional cost for permitting, and we don't want to have to do that either. So this hopefully will streamline that process. Get a letter, and it checks off, can move along in the process. It's one of the examples of the things that we hope will be a benefit to them. We've also included adding a foundation or setback survey for pools. And if you look at that chart one, you can see the underlines underneath those Xs. Those are the areas that are noted. Swimming pools are one of the areas where there seems to be more errors than other types of construction. One of the ways that we can check, and we'll check to make sure it's, that's what we're asking you to, I'm sorry, set the hearing for the next amendment.
Questions for Mr. Green? For anybody?
Yes, I just, I see poor Forrest sitting there, and I see the LPA made some changes. Forrest, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Yeah, we made a couple wording changes in the beginning under Section C, I believe it was, and text amendments.
I felt bad. You're sitting here all evening. I felt like you wanted to, you just wanted to get something off your chest.
All right, it's a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public. Does anybody here wishes to speak to this? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing portion and...
I'll move to move Ordinance 20-15 to a second and final hearing for October 5th, 2020, at 9:00 AM.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Move, second it. Discussion? Objection? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that's it for the public hearings, portion of the agenda, and we'll move into the administrative agenda. First item is A, which is a second public hearing, Resolution 20-25, adopting water rates. Second public hearing, approve 2020-25 resolution, adopting water rates, implementing town council policy for the continued periodic adjustment of rates necessary to fund the water improvement program.
Mr. Mayor, this is the final action, consistent with the consultant's report that was presented to you all, to implement a water rate structure to continue the transmission, water transmission improvements that the town has been doing throughout the town, to allow for the automatic adjustment for pass-through for water, wholesale water rate changes by the county. And rate structure that you put in place is tiered so that the heavier users pay more because they demand more water versus the light residential users. So this is the final action and the last opportunity for the public to come here in person and express any concerns they may wish. For the record, I've only had one email on the rate changes that I mentioned earlier, and it was about the stormwater rates, and it was from someone who was purported to me to be a, someone against the stormwater utility from day one.
Imagine you got a couple of positive emails from a few different people, too. But anyhow. Okay, that, then we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that wishes to address this matter? Hearing none. We'll close that and bring it back to the council. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
I will second.
Move and second it. Any discussion?
Just, Roger, just for folks who may still be brave enough to still be watching, is this, is this the resolution?
United Football's not on yet.
That provides the automatic, basically, cost of living increase for when the county raises their bulk rates, or is this the overall water utility adjustment?
It, this is the water adjustment, and in the water adjustment, it included a pass-through adjustment of any increases by the county. They recently have not had any, but we don't want to set a rate, and then theoretically tomorrow, they could change their rate and then put our rate moot. So it just builds that in as a pass-through.
What we're effectively doing, and many people may not know this, is that we don't, we don't have wells on the island. We buy our water in bulk from the county, and they charge us a fee for that. And so when that fee goes up beyond our control, because the county's expenses grow or whatever, we're just passing that along automatically, because it's, again, it's an item that we can't control, so therefore it just procedurally helps things run much more efficiently. Is that fair?
Yes, and if, and I'm paraphrasing what the rate consultant says, but that allows you to set up a more conservative rate, because you don't have to, you know, increase your rate in perhaps consideration of the fact that they may do that and put your funding for your projects and your utility, and your water utility operations out of whack. So you can come in with a conservative, more conservative rate, knowing that that just becomes a pass-through instead of having to guess or anticipate when the county might be doing that.
I think that's a great point. And again, for those who might be watching, this does include the water rate adjustments as well, then, this particular vote. Is that correct?
Right, there was a multi-year plan for increases, and that's included.
And the stormwater adjustment comes next, or?
That was already approved.
That was part of the budget process?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure people who are watching have a sense of what we're doing. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item is final public comment. Anyone here from the remaining two or three wish to comment? Hearing none. We'll move on. Town manager's items.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to mention two, two quick things. One is that we received the TDC agreements for next year funding. You had seen those agreements, and I believe you're supportive of them. It's over $900,000 of funding. The town for, on a reimbursement basis, for beach protection maintenance activities, and I assume you have no objection to me signing those. This is built into our budget. The second thing is, is that we were notified by FDOT that their sidewalk construction project on Connecticut Street is going to begin eminently. They're beginning their PR program to put out the word that people start seeing crews out there working on that particular segment of sidewalk.
Connecticut Street.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
That's all for today.
An attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, is proposed extension of my agreement with the town. It's due to expire at the end of this month. We are proposing to extend it on the same terms and conditions as previous years. We charge a flat rate for all general work, and for certain types of work that are specified in the engagement letter, an hourly rate of $225. Would point out that, based upon the budget that was adopted, you will see that since we have been your town attorney, we've actually reduced your overall county's fees and costs while maintaining what I believe to be a superior level of services to town staff, to council, and to the members of the residents of Fort Myers Beach. And I ask that you extend for an additional year. And last but not least, as I've pointed out in the past, I am employed by you all at will. So notwithstanding the fact that it says that it's for an additional year, subject to the terms and conditions of the agreement, you can terminate my, terminate our services on 30 days' notice. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Anybody want to make a motion to extend the agreement with John Howard and his firm for an additional year?
I guess I'd like to make a comment first. There's a list of his duties, attendance at council meetings, et cetera, et cetera. That does not include a nuisance abatement board. So you would be billing us your other rate that's in the exhibits that you bill us for extra services for nuisance abatement?
Certainly. We can reach in an agreement to expand the existing flat rate to include those services as an alternative.
Be willing to include it in the 10-5 that you get for your flat rate?
Um...
I'm not, I didn't put it out there. You kind of did. I was...
I would request, I would request an increase, frankly, at 10-5. As I've expressed to all of you at one point or another, there are most months that where we provide more than what we're getting paid as in the way of fewer to use our multiplier. I would ask for an additional, that I can negotiate with the manager. We can bring to you at the next meeting, if that's your direction. I...
Yes, John, my...
We wouldn't incur the cost unless, obviously, the services were needed.
That's why I was, I would, my preference would be that we keep the 10-5 as it is, and if we need your services for the nuisance abatement board, that you charge us the 225, that you charge us for extra work.
That's particularly acceptable to us.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Since we have a new service that you may be providing for us, how it would be billed?
I think that's a fair point. I think I would just caution building too much into this, because we don't know, again, as I said earlier, my hope is, this is a minimal intrusion on the work of the town and the town attorney. And the deterrence factor of this is, I think, underappreciated. So my hope would be, John, is that, is that as we go forward with this, if you, if it begins to become a problem and take a lot of time, I think it's very fair for you to ask for more. Up until then, let's kind of see how it works out. You've got a lot of experience in this area. You don't have to start from scratch. I think the initial board, once it's appointed, will need some advice and just some guidance in organizing. But again, this is a dynamic that, you know, it may never be used. So I just want to, I want to just make that point.
The way that it currently works is if, if something falls without, outside of the general services, then we actually then open up a separate billing number so we can keep track. And so that's what I would suggest we do. And if, when, if and when the services are needed, we'll be able to track those. And then, God willing, next year, we can then discuss maybe quantifying those and rolling it into the flat fee, or all leaving it as is.
It does bill separately. Just so you know, in anticipation of today, and when I met with John, I requested all of his bills for the past year, and he does one set of bills for his flat rate, and then he does a separate billing where he sets out other work. And I went over those with John, and he answered all my questions regarding them. If anybody wants to see them, I have them.
Provide them.
So that we, so that the staff doesn't use up a bunch more paper. I just wanted it clear for the record how that, that would be billed, and it would be my preference that it be under the, the separate billing, hourly billing.
We'll do that.
I concur.
Okay, so is there a motion to extend John's contract and his firm's contract with us for an additional year under the terms that have just been laid out?
Moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Yep.
Move and second it. Any further discussion? Objection? Carries unanimously.
Thank you. Councilman's items.
When we were talking about the National Flood Insurance Program savings, we're using the terminology additional savings. And just so the record's clear, I'd like to be clear as to what the savings were for the town and per policy. So the cumulative savings for the town is potentially $2.3 million, and the potential savings for the average policy is $363.
Okay, thank you. All right, councilman items. Councilman Allers.
Just a couple of things. I stopped into the outreach center the other day and was having a conversation with them about how things were going, people coming in, if they've had anybody. And they were very excited about the people that had been coming in. They also mentioned that a criminal that they were looking for, someone from the island, actually came in knowing that it was a safe place, to give them information as to where to find the person. So it's good to see that it's working, that people feel safe going in there to give information that potentially gets some bad people off the street. Also, as we discussed earlier, it hasn't been voted on or talked about, to potentially send to the Public Safety Committee the task with reviewing the enhanced services that was provided to us by the Lee County Sheriff's Office. I'm putting it out there to the, to the rest of the council to see if there's a will to do that.
As I stated, Councilman Allers, I'd like to see the Public Safety Committee look at the big picture. So not just enhanced services, neighborhood watch, and get involved with implementing neighborhood watch, potential security cameras, everything we can do. And so we're looking at all the different pieces of the puzzle ones.
Absolutely. I agree with both Councilor Allers and Councilor Veach. I think that's a great task for the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and wish them Godspeed.
That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
A lot of people don't know, but our staff monthly provides us with reports from all the various departments. And they put a lot of work into it, and I want to tell them, I read them.
Thank you.
And when I was reading it this month, I believe it was probably Chad who wrote this, although his name is not attached, he gave us a very interesting narrative regarding dune vegetation management. And he says, "Environmental staff would like to require vegetation permitting with pre and post inspections." He further indicates that we used to have an FDEP permit regarding residents creating and managing their dunes, but our permit expired in 2017, and that town staff would like to revise the beach dune management plan and re-permit it, continue to allow property owners to manage their dunes, and incentivize the creation of more dunes on Fort Myers Beach. I would like to say I'm all in favor of this, and I'd like to hear from other council members so that Roger knows that he has a majority of council instructing him that staff should move forward with the dune vegetation management issues that they addressed for us in their report.
So thank you, Vice Mayor. Generally, well, just so everyone's aware, what we try to do is give the council sort of a preview of items that will be coming before you in some way, shape, or form. So you have sort of a preview, to the extent you have questions or want additional information, or you yourselves want to set it for an M&amp;P to start the process. But we're trying to use the reports as a way to keep you all up to speed on all the things the staff is working on.
I just want to say, forge ahead. I don't think we need to put it on an M&amp;P. We've done it in the past. I'd like to make sure we're doing it again. And I know from the time I've lived on the beach, there are a lot more dunes than there used to be a decade or so ago, and I'd like to see more of that. I think it's for the beach.
You think it's good, but we're waiting for two more nods.
I definitely know it.
Double nod.
Okay, thank you.
We got nods.
Okay, thank you.
You should say that. I had a long conversation with someone yesterday about it, 12 hours actually, about the dune creations and so forth. Yeah, and I knew that was going to be coming back, but-
And he indicates that we have had multiple destruction violations during the past several months. So if that's something else, can get out there education-wise with people, don't mess with your dunes.
I believe Ms. Dexter put something out in our last broadcast, but we'll put something out again.
Yes.
Councilman?
Just real quick, Roger, I see Chad's laughing, he's probably still here, but just have a quick question. There's some wonderful beach restoration going on on the north end of the island, significant. Over the last few months, there's been significant erosion on parts of the south end. Is that measured by any particular entity and tract? And does the town have a role in that, or is that a county-state role? Who determines when an additional restoration effort will be required?
May I, Roger?
Please.
TDC, that's part of the TDC funding that we get. It is one of the things that we didn't lose. We lost our capital projects, but we didn't lose those. So it's an ongoing thing that we get funding through the TDC. And it is, was approved and is moving forward.
I appreciate that, but my question is, who, who actually watches the beach, measures, and then says, hey, we've got a problem here with serious erosion, let's put it on the list? Is that part of the funding?
We are paying for that to be done.
We pay a consultant, we pay a consultant to do that. And as Vice Mayor said, we believe that there's been enough erosion that we believe we have a re-nourishment project there. TDC basically said, well, because of COVID and other funding concerns, go ahead and get the consultant to document what the staff believes, and we'll look at the next cycle to perhaps start the funding of the re-nourishment.
Wonderful. And there is, there is a document that was put out five years ago about, you know, analysis of the, of the beach and its dynamics. The lengthy- Unfortunately, it seems like there's some significant changes just almost recently that, glad somebody's watching, thank you.
The beach.
The, did get an email, and maybe you all got this as well, from Len Lemmer, who owns the Nervous Nellies. And he has expressed interest in leasing a small parcel of Bayside Park while it's, yes, under consideration before we install our new design for Bayside. He's willing to work with the town manager and pay a fee for that lease. I'm guessing it's for, my sense is it's for a host station, for people to sense that they're open. And again, we've already taken a nice number of COVID's, pro-business COVID steps to help restaurants along. I just was, I see Forrest again is here. I wondered if, if anyone would be comfortable with Roger negotiating some kind of a short-term arrangement with Nervous Nellies to kind of help them through the COVID period, but then, and then take those funds. And maybe we could, we could sort of lockbox them towards the Veterans Memorial that has been proposed for Bayside Park as well. But I just, I didn't know what people's comfort level was. I promised him I would at least raise it in order to give the town manager some direction. It'd be temporary in nature.
Vice Mayor and Councilman, Councilman. It's our objective to bring you the updated status of Bayside Park to see if, now that, you know, the council has already commented on the original concept plan, they're going to bring back a revised version of that to you at the second meeting in October. Well, that's received, will dictate how fast that project will move forward. So right now, other than sort of almost on a week-by-week basis, it's kind of shot in the dark. If you're comfortable with that, that's fine. Knowing that, I'm gonna say no later than the second meeting in October, we'll be setting for some real plans, perhaps for, for the redevelopment of Bayside Park. But if you want me to do something short-term for that period between now and then, we-
Do you think that we'll actually break ground sometime in October or November?
Well, I think what, I think what we're gonna do is have a plan, we'll know, then we'll know based on, the council says this plan's terrible, also go back to the drawing board, we know we have a lot of time. The council says this is wonderful, get started as soon as you can. We'll also be able to approximate that amount of time. So-
My sense is they're just trying to get through the slow season, get a little help, and then plus they want to pay for it. And I thought it'd be a nice way to contribute to the Veterans Memorial there at Bayside. But if, only if it makes sense. I mean, I, I just thought, I just promised I'd throw it out there, I, you know.
I'm not interested in that direction.
Mr. Lemmer came and appeared before us at, at the last meeting, if you recall. He didn't just send us an email. But he was also one of the vehement opponents of what was going on down there in the original plans, as you will recall. Once that plan went out the window, all of a sudden, Mr. Lemmer appeared with another great idea what that would benefit his restaurant. Something about that doesn't, doesn't stick to, stick in with me just right. That, that's my objection to it. Whatever the will of the council is.
I think I, I concur with the mayor and Vice Mayor. I think that, you know, we do have that boardwalk that is regularly, chairs and things placed that they're not supposed to be there. So I think that, I concur, even in the temporary thing, I don't want, sometimes those temporary things can become permanent. I just promised I'd bring it up, just looking for direction. I've got- Yeah, a couple of things, you know, based on some of the things that went on with Murf, I've been in some conversations with people about the big San Carlos Pass Bridge, using that to make a reef, artificial reef. That has been, you know, they, they voted to replace that bridge, so there will be debris. It is probably a good time, if anybody supports us in council, to, if you've established, it's not really a town project, because this is really a county thing. But that if you have any, if you've established any relationships with commissioners and whatnot, to try to get their support for it. It sounds like they're, they're, they're already gonna do a bit of an analysis about how much it's gonna cost more or less to take it in a barge and dump it out in the ocean as opposed to put it on trucks and haul it away. And if there's any, any difference, any added expense to it, there are plenty of places to get money to- And I think it has a big support with our fishing community and, you know, could benefit our, our area just in that kind of tourism or recreation. Before you move on, who, are there specific groups that are formally in support of this? And where would the reef actually, reef actually be? From my understanding, this is just pretty big debris, and it'd probably be pretty far offshore. And I don't know of any specific groups that are necessarily advocating for it. I know people who want it, but I haven't heard personally about any groups that are actively trying to encourage this. I don't know if it's on anybody's radar yet. So that's, one of the reasons I bring it up is try to get it on the radar, people. So get, get some support to do it.
I've talked about it with some other people. And actually, we talked about it even before that, the bridge. We were talking about the debris from, from the road project, you know, all the old pipes, you know, the old concrete. Yeah, it is out there, people are talking about it. And actually, the overwhelming opinion is, is that they hope it doesn't go too far offshore. County has hundreds of artificial reefs out there. They've built over the years. There's all kinds of places out there with miscellaneous junk on the bottom of the Gulf. But, but they're all good reefs, you know, and they're all producing, producing good fish. It would be nice to have one a little closer and that people can make a run out to and not have to, takes a special type and a special boat and everything else to go, you know, 30, 40 miles offshore and pick up a couple of grouper and that sort of thing. But if, if one was in closer, it would open it up to even more of the recreational folks that don't want to make that long run out.
So for us newly initiated, Mr. Mayor, this is really primarily for fishing, not necessarily for snorkeling, is that right?
Well, it could be both. I mean, I mean, it attracts all kinds of things. And snorkeling, scuba diving, scuba diving, fishing, that sort of thing. It could, could involve that. There's gonna be a lot of debris there, there's gonna be a lot of debris from that. Hopefully, they'll be of a mind to do it. And the other thing that they agreed to, the day I went there to object about the, the bridge that was gonna be built, was they agreed to build a fishing platform down underneath. In, in, that, that day, they, well, yeah, I think we could look at that and we can get something done. So we ought to hold them to that as well. I mean, that, what they're doing by building that high span is they're eliminating all these fishermen that have been fishing there for, the bridge was built 60 years ago. So they're really, they're eliminating a, an old Florida addition right here, right here under our noses. That'll be gone. So hopefully, they'll, they'll come through with, with some sort of thing down, down underneath the bridge to accommodate the fishermen. Not eliminate it completely. And hope, you know, and I mean, whatever it takes, I mean, if, if, I mean, I'm, I'm all behind it, the reef idea. And hopefully, I mean, if it takes talking to the commissioners and getting, getting, I think we ought to get behind that. I mean, that's great for our community, it's great for Lee County, it's, it's for everybody. The reef is always good.
I, I agree with that. Mr. Mayor, do you have a group that could maybe put a suggestion in or give us a suggestion as to a location that maybe would work best for everybody?
Yeah, 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 I do. I know some, you know, of course Casey Streeter, you know, who we granted a year, last year at the budget hearings. You know, we could ask his group, they're out on the water all the time. And there's other special fishermen that can tell you. And there's also captains for clean water, they all know, they all know what, what's out there, what, what else could be helpful. Those are, those are good groups to consult.
It'd just be nice to have a, you know, a little more detail to be able to reach out to Lee County Commissioners.
Well, I'll make some phone calls to different people and see if we can't get, get some comments and questions and so forth and-
I understand it too, is they, they need like specific criteria, like it could be a hard bottom, or else things just tend to sink and then you have nothing. So, you know, they have to do some work to figure out suitable places. And, okay, another thing is, in conversations with, with Roger, the Bay Oaks project has a lot of parking spaces. And that's based on the formula that the town dictates about building size and number of parking spaces we need. Thing about the Bay Oaks campus is that the use of the, of the footage is such that I don't think we need that kind of parking. And right now, they're designing, using that kind of parking formula. Roger informed me that the town council could change the parking requirements that Bay Oaks is going to have. And if we are willing to do that to something suitable for the actual use of Bay Oaks, then it'd be good to get that into the designer's hand as soon as possible. So they're not, they don't have this criteria, which isn't really necessary, that they're following and spending money on designing around.
Yes, my question would be, if the idea is that we're going to have a theater space there with performances, that's going to require parking. We might have bigger crowds for those kinds of events that we don't, we don't currently have the ability to have right now. So I'd be hesitant about limiting the parking for that reason.
Other, if you have, you know, 300 parking spaces there, that can be some issue now for the, is it gonna be a spot where then a lot of people are gonna go to park their cars in an area where there aren't services or beach visitors, things like that?
I know we've used it for other things, when we had the hazardous waste, was a place we could bring people through to, to drop off hazardous waste, there was room there to do that. When we did the tree giveaway, it gave a space, so parking spaces can be used for other things. And we really don't have a large space owned by the town that we can use for those types of activities. Again, I would hesitate to go back on our, our parking there.
And then the idea would be these be metered parking spots?
Not in my brain.
Okay, so then we're gonna basically provide free beach parking in the middle of the island where there's not, there's not a lot of facilities for people to come?
The parking would be for Bay Oaks. If it turns out that it's being used for some other reason, then we may have to come up with some plan to deal with that. But if I'm going to go to a concert at Bay Oaks, I want to know that I'm not gonna go down there and drive round and round and not be able to find a parking space. I don't want to have to pay for that parking space because it's part of a facility that pays taxes to make into a place for us to get, to gather as citizens of our town.
Another, another idea is to have fewer paved parking spaces than have grass areas that can be used for different things. But like when you go down to the women's club, and if there is an event that requires parking, then people can park on the grass. I just, if, if you're, you know, if the, if the council thinks that we should, we should stick with the parking requirement, then- Well, don't, don't, don't go away from that, that grass option for additional parking because I've looked at the cost of some of that parking, especially the way they had it designed, it's extremely expensive, as you know. So if you could figure out a better way where we could get more bang for our buck and still parking, especially if part of it's on grass. Had a chance to, not to digress, but I had a chance to go out there the other day and tour ball fields with some members of the Fort Myers Beach Little League. It is interesting, they, we were led to believe that they've got a, that they're the ones driving the, the bus for this, these two new fields. Not sure that's exactly the case. So I, I think there's a little bit of, there's some opportunities with some innovative look at parking, some innovative look at field surfaces. We may be able to husband some resources there and be able to accomplish this project. Maybe not with the frightening initial cost numbers that we've seen. We may be able to, be able to do some things without cutting too many corners on the quality of the project. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be discouraged, Councilor Veach, from poking around in that parking dynamic. Not, again, accommodate the Vice Mayor's concerns, but just do it in a different way. I think Roger also, also commented that I think they've gone away from the expensive previous paper idea more towards maybe a system where they could gather water and reuse it and then save money on the irrigation water.
Yeah, we'll, we'll know a lot more. We're, we're technically scheduled for presentation update on all three sites, Times Square, Bayside, and Bay Oaks, the town council on the second meeting in October. And I can tell you now, the plans will not be perfect. But we have some consensus about amenity concepts and, you know, whatever. Then I think we can talk about much permanent parking, overflow parking, and things of that nature, council might want to consider.
Okay, I have, sorry, I have kind of a longer list here. There is the Crab Committee, they did a survey. Chair Sheena Stockton committed a survey to talk to people, residents of the town, about what they wanted to see at the bayfront park. And there's no real big surprises in it. Not many people were, of course, in favor of the building, which we, we presume to. It was pretty much mixed on whether people wanted a stage. Seemed to be a lot of support for some kind of the bubble fountains, once a little water jet shooting up. Boy, I understand their, their maintenance issue. And that survey is available, I think digitally. I think Christie Corey may have it, if anybody wants to reach out and, and have a look at what people were, were saying about that project. Lastly, Roger, the, the Estero Boulevard project, the landscaping, has that been executed now? Are we responsible for the landscaping?
Well, no, and I think there's a second question, no. So the, we have not received the signed resolution from the county back, nor the check. Okay? And then secondarily, until the contractor says that they're done with that segment, never to go back, never to mess around with the pavers, readjust the concrete. When they get to that point and they actually turn, say that project in that segment is complete, complete, that's when that segment would turn over to us for potential landscaping opportunities.
Okay, one, one thing I was, I was gonna suggest with it is, in the area where it is done, we have that narrow parking strip, which isn't particularly useful, and they put the pretty cheap grass on it. It's to look for alternatives. And I would recommend we could either do it through the Marine Resources Task Force or directly, is to get the Native Plant Society to make some suggestions. I know through someone I'm close to, who's, who's active in the Native Plant Society, that there are some, there are some native plants that you can mow that, like, there's one called the Turkle, Turkey Tangle Frog Fruit, which is a great name for a plant, that is native. It supports a lot of, a lot of pollinators, and it can be mowed just like, like grass if you want or not.
Well, we appreciate the sort of introduction slash referral. And we'd be glad to meet with, with that party if you send me an email with contact information, we'd be happy to talk to them about their ideas.
Right.
Right. That's it.
Thank you. I don't have my packet with me, so I'm not going to take up any more time, so that'll conclude that. That brings us to adjournment, unless anyone has anything else for the good of the order here this evening? And it's 7:50, adjourned.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're going to miss us, Michelle?
I think Michelle might be back, if Amy takes her.